Good evening, welcome to all. This meeting of the Pecoson City Council was called to order. Due to the storm over the weekend, we have to amend our agenda and we're going to add item two under new business, which is a resolution ratifying a declaration issued by the city manager declaring a state of emergency in the city of Pecoson on October 11th, 2025. So can we please get a motion and a second to amend the agenda accordingly?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Very well. Kristi Koff will vote please.
Vice Mayor Bunting, aye. Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you Kristi. So the agenda is amended to add item two under new business. And with that, we will move on to item B on the agenda, which is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. That will be led by Councilwoman Jeanne Hubbard.
Let's take a moment to pause and reflect. Lord, we gather tonight gratitude for the people who make our town run day in and day out, the employees who serve with diligence, who respond with care, carry out the work with integrity and pride. We also acknowledge the trust placed in us by each of our neighbors, friends, and citizens. It's a humbling experience to lead, to make decisions that shape the future of our hometown. May we never take it lightly, this confidence they have shown us. In every meeting, may we be guided by wisdom, grounded in respect, and united in purpose. May our words be thoughtful, our actions be fair, and our hearts remain open to the needs of all who call Pecoson home. In his name we pray. Amen.
I am the President of the United States of America and the sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeanne. We'll move on to item C on the agenda, which is spec presentations. We actually have two tonight. The first is to address the history of Clayd Rollins Funeral Home. The second one will be a presentation about the United Way of the Virginia Peninsula. But as part of our celebration of our 50th anniversary as a city, we're recognizing and honoring businesses that predate the city, our founding as a city in 1975. One of those businesses, and what is believed to be our oldest and continuous operation, is Clayd Rollins Funeral Home, going back to 1895. And we have with us tonight the funeral home director, Mr. George Hammond. And George, the floor is yours. And when you get finished with your presentation, we have something to present to you.
I appreciate that. Hopefully it's a cot pillow.
If you had told me 35 years ago that this little country farm boy would be standing in front of city council representing one of the most amazing profound professions and businesses, I'd have laughed at you. It's just an honor to be here and an honor to represent the place I represent and the profession I represent. I'm going to go a little bit by the script here because I'm a little nervous. The year is 1895, and a local carpenter and blacksmith who has been working as a small businessman in the small waterman and farming community of Pecoson has been asked by local families to provide a simple box big enough for them to place their deceased loved one in so they could bury them back home or in a designated cemetery. Much like COVID has changed the world in recent times, the Civil War has changed a lot of how we began to do things in America. Small towns across the states were anxious to get their deceased loved ones from one's home from a bitter tragedy of war. Many carpenters and blacksmiths were asked to go above and beyond to produce not only a container, but a method to safely transport the soldiers home before Mother Nature had her way. In many cases, the bodies would have had to have been essentially left where they fell, or at points along the way because the integrity of the remains could not be sustained. Thus, the birth of the embalmer and undertaker, a person who preserved the body and undertook what many people and tasks someone else would not want to do. Over the years, our titles have changed, undertaker, funeral director, and now funeral service licensee. I like to think we lose a lot in the words that have been chosen to define us. I prefer undertaker. Clayd Rollins Funeral Home at 836 Pecoson Avenue is believed to be the oldest continuously run business in Pecoson. The funeral home was founded in 1895 by James Taylor Rollins. After JT, James Taylor's death in 1932, his son George Clayd Rollins purchased the business and changed the name from JT Rollins Funeral Home to Clayd Rollins Funeral Home. And it continued running during his lifetime. In 1953, George Clayd's widow, Winnie Evans Rollins, there's going to be a lot of names in this, took over the funeral home until her death in 1958. And then at that time Florence Hopkins Shaw, Lena J. Rollins, Missouri Hopkins Kruger, and Mary Louise Peachey Downs, the nieces of George Clayd Rollins jointly inherited the business. This legacy that was built by JT Rollins to establish the funeral home was not by choice, but through a series of circumstances. Again, a carpenter, a blacksmith by trade, JT operated his shop next to the home place, which is now 1306 Pecoson Avenue, where he did woodworking and all kinds of things from making picture frames to building houses, several of which are still standing. And in his blacksmith shop, he not only shoot horses, but he also made supplies for the local watermen such as oyster tongs and clam rakes. Since JT Rollins was a carpenter, he was frequently asked by members of the community to build boxes to be used as coffins. It was a difficult and costly trip to get to a place where regular coffins were sold. As an accommodation to his friends and neighbors, he did this for them. And his wife Susan Catherine Carmine's Rollins was there, and she was a very compassionate woman, and she disliked the thought of just placing a body in a plain bare box. As a result, she bought the necessary materials, cotton, padding, and sheeting, and she lined the burial boxes that her husband built. At that time, most of the travel was done by water, since roads were little more than cow paths, and wandering through swampy land. So many in the families in this area owned boats, but few owned horses. Members of the community frequently asked JT Rollins, who owned horses, if he would carry their coffins to the cemetery in his wagon. To this day, we still have the old horse-drawn funeral wagon, which was last used for the funeral of Wally Downs in 2003. As a result, he began performing this service in addition to building the coffins that were lined by his wife. He decided, since he was performing these things, that he might as well get into the business officially. He ordered an embalming book to learn the procedure, then he built a small wooden funeral home next to the carpenter's shop, and then started JT Rollins Funeral Home, now known as Clayd Rollins Funeral Home. As families began seeking alternatives to keeping the body at home, George Clayd Rollins eventually built the current funeral home on the corner of Pecoson Avenue and Cedar Road. And that was done in 1968. And that was to accommodate the visitations that were no longer being had at the home and smaller services. Currently, I am the managing partner and director. This came about following the decision of the family to step down from their position in September of 2018. This came to a shock not only to me, but to this community. If I could have changed that tide, I would have. But it wasn't mine to change. When that happened, I was asked to leave where I had been there almost 12, where I had been for almost 12 years to give up my tenure and come back here and work in a community what I've lived in since 1995. Sorry. And I serve as the managing partner, director, embalmer, cremationist, and many less noteworthy titles like house cleaner, landscaper, and the list goes on and on. As many of you know, there is an investor that I answer to. But I maintain and manage 100% of the daily operations and decisions made by Clayd Rollins Funeral Home, or for the funeral home. I'm an equal partner in the letters and corporation because I wanted Clayd Rollins to continue to be locally owned and operated to the best of my ability. I did not want to see this historic business fall into the hands of larger corporations that, in my opinion, would destroy the local and historical integrity of Clayd Rollins. I will continue to hold up that integrity for as long as I am physically able. I wholly understand that I am not the family, but I am family, married deep into family, and have served this community faithfully. This is not a profession that many young people are willing to commit to once they discover the sacrifice involved. It is my prayer that some of our younger generation will follow me in this ministry to our community. I started at Clayd Rollins in 1993 and became their very first apprentice in February of 94. I was taught many of the skills I have today by Wally Downs, Vernon Kruger, Richard Herring, and certainly under the direction of Ms. Florence Shaw and Ms. Lena Rollins. And if you knew them, you'll understand that statement. They were very emphatic about the way they wanted things done. Ms. Missouri and Ms. Peachey had passed by the time I had been working there. Like many small mom and pop businesses of Pecoson, Clayd Rollins faces the same challenges of trying to compete with large corporations and discount storefront societies that offer the financial appeal, but little in the way of personalization and service. So much has changed in our world in this profession. For a moment though, for just a brief moment, I want to take you through a little journey in the life of a small town funeral home and its director. Imagine this. Since 1895, a member of this community has been on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week to attend to the death of a person in this community or its surrounding areas. They made a choice to enter this profession for their community's sake, certainly not for their own. Over the past 127 years, they have put even their own families behind the priority of the needs of their community, lost holidays, anniversaries, birthdays, vacations, to faithfully serve this community. Clayd Rollins roughly serves 80 to 120 families a year. We have two full-time employees, my daughter and I, and a small group of part-time employees that we cannot function without. God bless them. The number I have, this phone, has been on 24/7 since 2004. It's been turned off once for two hours during my daughter's wedding last October. It is a tremendous commitment, and for me, a ministry. I cannot imagine that there is any other business or profession that can define the dedication to their community in a way that Clayd Rollins has over all these years. We continue to pray that our community recognizes our dedication and commitment, the complete and individual attention and commitment we give to each and every family we serve. Clayd Rollins, like many other small businesses, was created out of a need in our community. I noticed during the last this nor'easter, many of the news stations have stopped listing us as the city of Pecoson. They have grouped us together with other cities, but not as the
If you had told me thirty-five years ago that this little country farm boy would be standing in front of city council representing one of the most amazing profound professions and businesses, I'd have laughed at you. It's just an honor to be here and an honor to represent the place I represent and the profession I represent. I'm gonna go a little bit by the script here because I'm a little nervous. The year is eighteen ninety-five, and a local carpenter and blacksmith who has been working as a small businessman in the small waterman and farming community of Pecosin has been asked by local families to provide a simple box big enough for them to place their deceased loved one in so they could bury them back home or in a designated cemetery. Much like COVID has changed the world in recent times, the Civil War has changed a lot of how we began to do things in America. Small towns across the states were anxious to get their deceased loved ones from one's home from a bitter tragedy of war. Many carpenters and blacksmiths were asked to go above and beyond to produce not only a container but a method to safely transport the soldiers home before Mother Nature had her way. In many cases, the bodies would have had to have been essentially left where they fell or at points along the way because the integrity of the remains could not be sustained. Thus, the birth of the embalmer and undertaker, a person who preserved the body and undertook what many people and tasks someone else would not want to do. Over the years, our titles have changed: undertaker, funeral director, and now funeral service licensee. I like to think we lose a lot in the words that have been chosen to define us. I prefer undertaker. Clayd A. Rollins Funeral Home at eight thirty-six Pecosin Avenue is believed to be the oldest continuously-run business in Pecosin. The funeral home was founded in eighteen ninety-five by James Taylor Rollins. After J.T. James Taylor's death in nineteen thirty-two, his son George Clayd Rollins purchased the business and changed the name from J.T. Rollins Funeral Home to Clayd A. Rollins Funeral Home, and it continued running during his lifetime. In nineteen fifty-three, George Clayd's widow Winnie Evans Rollins—there's gonna be a lot of names in this—took over the funeral home until her death in nineteen fifty-eight. And then at that time Florence Hopkins Shaw, Lena J. Rollins, Missouri Hopkins Kruger, and Mary Louise Peachey Downs, the nieces of George Clayd Rollins jointly inherited the business. This legacy that was built by J.T. Rollins to establish the funeral home was not by choice but through a series of circumstances. Again, a carpenter, a blacksmith by trade, J.T. operated his shop next to the home place, which is now thirteen oh-six Pecosin Avenue, where he did woodworking and all kinds of things from making picture frames to building houses, several of which are still standing. And in his blacksmith's shop, he not only shoot horses, but he also made supplies for the local watermen such as oyster tongs and clam rakes. Since J.T. Rollins was a carpenter, he was frequently asked by members of the community to build boxes to be used as coffins. It was a difficult and costly trip to get to a place where regular coffins were sold. As an accommodation to his friends and neighbors, he did this for them. And his wife Susan Catherine Carmine's Rollins was there, and she was a very compassionate woman, and she disliked the thought of just placing a body in a plain bare box. As a result, she bought the necessary materials, cotton, padding, and sheeting, and she lined the burial boxes that her husband built. At that time, most of the travel was done by water since roads were little more than cow—whatever, cow paths—and wandering through swampy land. So many in the families in this area owned boats, but few owned horses. Members of the community frequently asked J.T. Rollins, who owned horses, if he would carry their coffins to the cemetery in his wagon. To this day, we still have the old horse-drawn funeral wagon, which was last used for the funeral of Wally Downs in two thousand and three. As a result, he began performing this service in addition to building the coffins that were lined by his wife. He decided, since he was performing these things, that he might as well get into the business officially. He ordered an embalming book to learn the procedure, then he built a small wooden funeral home next to the carpenter's shop, and then started J.T. Rollins Funeral Home, now known as Clayd A. Rollins Funeral Home. As families began seeking alternatives to keeping the body at home, George Clayd A. Rollins eventually built the current funeral home on the corner of Pecosin Avenue and Cedar Road, and that was done in nineteen sixty-eight. And that was to accommodate the visitations that were no longer being had at the home and smaller services. Currently, I am the managing partner and director. This came about following the decision of the family to step down from their position in September of twenty eighteen. This came to a shock not only to me but to this community. If I could have changed that tide, I would have. But it wasn't mine to change. When that happened, I was asked to leave where I had been there almost twelve—where I had been for almost twelve years to give up my tenure and come back here and work in a community what I've lived in since nineteen ninety-five. Sorry. And I serve as the managing partner, director, embalmer, cremationist, and many less noteworthy titles like house cleaner, landscaper, and the list goes on and on. As many of you know, there is an investor that I answer to, but I maintain and manage a hundred percent of the daily operations and decisions made by Clayd A. Rollins Funeral Home, or for the funeral home. I'm an equal partner in the letters and corporation because I wanted Clayd A. Rollins to continue to be locally owned and operated to the best of my ability. I did not want to see this historic business fall into the hands of larger corporations that, in my opinion, would destroy the local and historical integrity of Clayd A. Rollins. I will continue to hold up that integrity for as long as I am physically able. I wholly understand that I am not the family, but I am family, married deep into family, and have served this community faithfully. This is not a profession that many young people are willing to commit to once they discover the sacrifice involved. It is my prayer that some of our younger generation will follow me in this ministry to our community. I started Clayd A. Rollins in nineteen ninety-three and became their very first apprentice in February of ninety-four. I was taught many of the skills I have today by Wally Downs, Vernon Kruger, Richard Herring, and certainly under the direction of Ms. Florence Shaw and Ms. Lena Rollins. And if you knew them, you'll understand that statement. They were very emphatic about the way they wanted things done. Ms. Missouri and Ms. Peachey had passed by the time I had been working there. Like many small mom-and-pop businesses of Pecosin, Clayd A. Rollins faces the same challenges of trying to compete with large corporations and discount storefront societies that offer the financial appeal but little in the way of personalization and service. So much has changed in our world in this profession. For a moment though, for just a brief moment, I want to take you through a little journey in the life of a small-town funeral home and its director. Imagine this: since nineteen—or eighteen ninety-five, a member of this community has been on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to attend to the death of a person in this community or its surrounding areas. They made a choice to enter this profession for their community's sake, certainly not for their own. Over the past one hundred and twenty-seven years, they have put even their own families behind the priority of the needs of their community, lost holidays, anniversaries, birthdays, vacations, to faithfully serve this community. Clayd A. Rollins roughly serves eighty to one hundred and twenty families a year. We have two full-time employees, my daughter and I, and a small group of part-time employees that we cannot function without. God bless them. The number I have, this phone, has been on twenty-four-seven since two thousand and four. It's been turned off once for two hours during my daughter's wedding last October. It is a tremendous commitment and, for me, a ministry. I cannot imagine that there is any other business or profession that can define the dedication to their community in a way that Clayd A. Rollins has over all these years. We continue to pray that our community recognizes our dedication and commitment, the complete and individual attention and commitment we give to each and every family we serve. Clayd A. Rollins, like many other small businesses, was created out of a need in our community. I noticed during the last this nor'easter, many of the news stations have stopped listing us as the city of Pecosin. They have grouped us together with other cities, but not as the city of Pecosin. Not sure why I noticed that, but I did. Simple and convenient for them, maybe so. But the heartbeat of this city is its long history of mom-and-pop waterman and farming community that fought hard for its independence, which we celebrate, and has seen those mom-and-pops slowly dwindle away as our community continues to grow outside itself. I believe we will only survive with the continued support of our community. It is my hope that we celebrate this fifty-year milestone and that City Holland—the city of Pecosin—will dedicate a small portion of their resources to highlight these businesses and their historical value and to bring community awareness to an ever-growing population who may never know that these services exist within Pecosin. Without your support to preserve and protect, we may not survive. I am humbled and honored to be a servant of this community, and I thank you for the privilege and opportunity to speak here tonight. Thank you.
George, thank you for being here. You are certainly among friends, and what you just described is exactly what we're attempting to do with recognizing and honoring numerous businesses right here within this community that predate the city. Many, such as Clayd A. Rollins, even predate the town of Pecosin. Bill Forrest was here a few weeks ago and—
He had a much livelier presentation, and I appreciated that. I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but—
That's okay. Relax. You're among friends. But as in your case, Bill Forrest Seaford also predates the city and the town of Pecosin, and it's certainly a tradition. And one of the things about Clayd A. Rollins, regardless of where we're born or how we came into this world, it's a rite of passage per se for Pecosin people. You have to go out of here through Clayd A. Rollins.
I'm honored.
Well, as you should be. You're a true public servant, as is—as are all the funeral home employees.
Thank you.
I've lost count many years ago of the number of funerals that I have attended at Clayd A. Rollins. So it's certainly a tradition, and we do have a little something to present to you as a token of respect and appreciation from the city for what you've done for the community.
Thank you. And I—thank you for the honor. I am humbled every day that I've been called to this ministry, and I'm humbled by all those that came before me, and I wish they were standing here today.
If y'all notice, we have on the screen a picture of the plaques that we have for the businesses that we're recognizing. I think those were selected and designed by Ms. Kristi Snapp and Ms. Ashley Chika. So ladies, well done. There, we'll move on to our next presentation. We're very pleased and proud to have with us tonight Ms. Charvella West, president and chief executive officer of the United Way of the Virginia Peninsula. So Ms. West, thank you for being with us. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much for having me this evening, for having me, but for having me tonight and getting to hear such a beautiful story of a family legacy, an industry legacy, and learning more about the city of Pecosin. Thank you. I'm a little short. Thank you. I'm Charvella West, president and CEO for United Way of the Virginia Peninsula, and it's really my pleasure to be here with you. I'm so grateful for the city of Pecosin and how you've supported and partnered with our United Way and our partners within the nonprofit sector to make change that matters for our workforce, for our children, and for those who need our help. Since two thousand and seventeen, following our Pathways Out of Poverty Collective impact agenda, the United Way and our partners have been focused on a population that we refer to as ALIS, asset limited, income constrained, employed, those who are working, sometimes multiple jobs, but whose paychecks don't always stretch quite far enough. ALIS households often earn too much for government-funded programs, but not enough to save, to own a home, or to recover from the unexpected, like a miss shift due to flooding or illness. ALIS cares for and teaches our children. ALIS sometimes fishes our waterways. ALIS takes care of the sick and elderly. ALIS ensures that our local economy flourishes, but ALIS needs support. On the Virginia Peninsula, forty-one percent of households are experiencing poverty, ALIS or below. While Pecosin ranks second lowest percentage of households experiencing need at just twenty-nine percent, we know that the impacts of poverty know no borders, as many in our region may live in one locality and work in another. We believe that it takes the collective to change the lives of our neighbors in need and to improve the trajectories of future generations. So we say, united is the way to a healthy community, to youth opportunity, to community resilience, and to financial security. Serving the nine cities and counties between New Kent and Hampton as well as a portion of the middle peninsula, United Way of the Virginia Peninsula is proud to be the mobilizer, bringing financial and human resources together for the greater good, to be the connector, ensuring that everyone in our community can access and utilize the vast array of resources that exist here, and to be the convener, bringing government, corporate, and nonprofit partners together for better efficiency, sustainable change, and greater impact. In the last eight years, we have grown our impact and have risen quickly and effectively to answer the call from our community, to keep our families housed, to keep individuals working, and to help give our children the best chance at success now and in the future. Last year, our United Way mobilized more than five million dollars in resources for our community. The traditional workplace campaign model allowed more than seven thousand employees to make a charitable gift to more than two hundred nonprofit organizations. As we continue to invite local donors to give right here at home, we're proud to certify and fund nearly forty local nonprofit organizations on the front lines of caring for and lifting up our community, nineteen of which provide services for residents of Pecosin. Thanks to the leadership and generosity of our board of directors, whose personal and corporate contributions offset our administrative and fundraising costs, one hundred percent of gifts to United Way or to one of our partner agencies go right back into our community. In two thousand and twenty-one, United Way launched the Community Assistance Network, or as we call it, CAN, a centralized advocacy and referral service that mobilizes the power of more than a hundred and fifty partners from the faith community, other charitable organizations, human services agencies, and others to provide outcome-based referrals for anyone on the Virginia Peninsula who needs help. CAN provides one phone number for our entire region to access basic needs, financial assistance, and stabilization supports. Since CAN's inception through June of last year—excuse me, through June of twenty-five, over fourteen thousand people have received assistance. That assistance has kept roofs over folks' heads to make sure that they have childcare or transportation so they can keep going to work, and to help fill in the gaps when paychecks don't stretch quite far enough. Last fiscal year ending in July, the Community Assistance Network served eleven households in Pecosin, mobilizing nearly ten thousand dollars through sixteen outcome-based referrals. Each of these households were facing housing instability, not surprising considering the continual rise in costs of basic needs. While the need we've seen in Pecosin is only a fraction of what we see in some other parts of our community, we know that to get help, you need—the help you need when you fall behind can be uniquely challenging for a Pecosin resident. The referrals that we provided those households not only helped address the immediate crucial need but made sure that each of them was connected to their own network of support to help them continue rising. With the Community Assistance Network as our foundation, we've spent the last four years working to systematically and efficiently reduce evictions in our community. In two thousand and twenty, we launched the peninsula's first-ever eviction reduction pilot, funded primarily by the state through the Department of Housing and Community Development. United Way has been a leading participant in the state's efforts to make evictions rare, brief, and humane when they happen. As the highest-funded grantee supporting all of the Virginia Peninsula, this work has been vitally important to our workforce, our economic goals, our educational outcomes, and to the overall quality of life for citizens who call this region home. State funds are braided alongside private funds and other supportive services. These resources combined are not just held by United Way but are mobilized quickly throughout our community to vetted organizations and agencies on the front lines of addressing housing instability, workforce development, and supportive services. For example, York County Housing has been a critical partner coming alongside the Community Assistance Network as one of our eviction-reduction pilot sub-grantees. Along with our collaborative eviction court navigation services that help ensure tenants and landlords are given every opportunity to restore their agreements and bring landlords whole, and our facilitated conversations and collaborations, we have seen measurable impact in our community's efforts to reduce evictions. Having worked at our United Way for more than ten years now, it's been increasingly apparent to me that preventing the trauma and sometimes irreversible damage of housing loss can have the most effective outcomes and can essentially—if I can use this term—give our community a bigger bang for our buck. With median rent prices around twelve hundred dollars, a property owner in our area could typically lose two to three months of rent, or two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, while the tenant stands to lose more than twelve thousand dollars on average. And if there aren't program services and resources to catch a family when they fall behind on their rent, it could cost over thirty-five thousand dollars in shelter, additional school supports, and new housing. In addition to the economic toll on landlords, tenants, and the community, the impact on education, workforce, and the emotional damage to children and families is devastating and immeasurable. For these reasons, our United Way has also, just last month, employed the first-ever post-eviction case manager to work with families who have children to problem-solve and create plans, so if an eviction does happen, we can bring resources to bear and ensure that the eviction is rare and humane. Thanks to partnerships with judges and sheriffs we know better today than we did in two thousand and nineteen what evictions look like beyond the filing, and we've seen significant decreases in almost every locality over the last year and a half. The number of landlord filings has decreased by more than nine percent since we started tracking this in two thousand and twenty-three, and the number of executed lockouts is down twenty-five percent from that same time. We recognize that we can't account for every filing, but this is a sound indication that the work our community is doing, the interventions, are effective. In York Pecosin—count—in York Pecosin, where evictions are filed through court, while the volume of unlawful detainer filings and executed evictions ebbs and flows, the volume is one of the lowest in the region. More importantly, the chances of a household being locked out after a filing are lower here than in any other jurisdiction. The Virginia Peninsula community has been setting a standard across the state for what a multi-sector collective model can accomplish, and United Way of the Virginia Peninsula is proud to be a part and to have the support of our local government leaders. We applied the collective impact model as we focused on children and youth last year. Between learning loss, social and emotional deficiencies, and mental health needs exacerbated by the pandemic, we've been at the forefront of this work. In two thousand and twenty-three, our United Way launched the Peninsula Youth Collaborative, a collaboration of school-based nonprofit and other programs serving children and youth. While we're still new in this space, we know the power of the collective, and it's already been proven. Shortly after we formed the Peninsula Youth Collaborative, we were called on by our partners at Busch Gardens Williamsburg to help fill off-season hiring needs like Hallo Scream, Christmastown. So in partnership with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council and the seventy-plus organizations that make up the Youth Collaborative, we formed the Youth Employment Pilot, and one hundred and thirty young people, ages sixteen to twenty-four, have not only been employed by Busch Gardens through this pilot, but they've received free reliable transportation for every one of their working shifts. The Youth Collaborative includes seventy-ish organizations and programs serving children and young adults on the peninsula, and about half of those programs have some version of mentorship. Whether it's in school or at home, or maybe it's specific to a certain demographic, regardless of the difference, what we know is that each of those programs that are looking for mentors have one thing in common, and that's a waitlist. The overwhelming need for caring adults to spend quality time with our—we believe that through our engagement at United Way with local business and our role as a community-wide volunteer facilitator, plus the formation of the Youth Collaborative and getting the youth organizations working together, that we are uniquely positioned to mobilize the caring power of people, to improve social and educational outcomes for our children, equipping the workforce for tomorrow. I'm pleased to share that in the next month, we will be launching Champions for Children, leveraging United Way's access, infrastructure, and assets to more effectively match volunteers to serve alongside child and youth-serving nonprofits. United, we can clear the waitlists. For more than eighty years, United Way has served the Virginia Peninsula, mobilizing support from our business community, advocating for the less fortunate, and providing funding to expand the capacity of the nonprofit sector so that together we can meet complex and challenging needs of those experiencing poverty. This applies also in times of disaster and emergency. Please know that your United Way stands ready to help spread the message of safety, to mobilize critical resources, and to move our community to action when it's needed most. We might look a little different today than when we first started as a community chest, and our focus was helping the jobless, but our purpose and our vision remain, and that's to be the connector between what our community needs and what our community can give. We envision a Virginia peninsula in which every person can care for themselves and their families, and maybe even help their neighbor. When we can do that together, our ability to give help and hope becomes infinite. Thank you very much for allowing me to share today on behalf of the— On behalf of the staff and the Board of United Way of the Virginia Peninsula, as well as our partners, thank you for serving and leading and for being advocates for Alice in our community. Thank you.
Ms. West, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Really enjoyed your presentation, very informative and insightful. Do we have any questions or comments from council members from Ms. West?
I have a quick question. Did I hear you say that 29% of Pecosin residents are experiencing needs?
Yes, 29%. That's based on the most recent data published in May, um, as of 2024. And so that's Alice and below.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Very well, I mean, the, the United Way and its reputation certainly speaks for itself. Y'all have had positive impact on the greater good of all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts and appreciate you being with us tonight, Ms. West.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to item D on the agenda. It's a proclamation in recognition of our Finance Department for the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And this is the 34th consecutive year that our Finance Department has received this award, and the work that they do daily in the Finance Department contributes mightily to our city's AAA bond rating, uh, we're very thankful for. And that's, that status is something that all citizens of Pecosin benefit from on a daily basis. But we have with us tonight our Finance Director, Ms. Tara Moore Woodruff. Tara, if you could join me at the podium, please.
Good evening.
In recognition, whereas the Government Finance Officers Association is a nationally-recognized professional association of state and local finance officers dedicated to the sound management of government financial resources in the United States and Canada, and whereas each year, state and local governments are invited to submit their annual budget documents for review by the Government Finance Officers Association, and whereas the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award established in 1984 is awarded only to those governments who satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, and whereas accurate and transparent budget presentation is essential for building public trust and ensuring accountability in governmental entities, and whereas the City of Pecosin Finance Department has demonstrated a commitment to exceeding the high standards of budget presentation, as evidenced by their receipt of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, and whereas the presentation of budget, the preparation of budget presentations that are easily readable and efficiently organized contributes to informed decision-making by citizens, policymakers, oversight agencies, Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, do hereby recognize and commend the Finance Department for their outstanding achievement in budget, budget presentation, and their commitment to transparency and accountability. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, to be affixed this 14th day of October 2025, and it is signed by myself and my six other fellow council members. So Tara, congratulations. Thank you to your and your staff for your efforts and contributions.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Would you like to share any thoughts or comments?
I will, actually.
Yeah, please do.
Surprisingly, I will. I just want to say thank you very much. These, these awards, um, we worked really hard, um, on these during the year. Um, last year was an especially difficult year for the Finance Department. We had two staff members that we lost unexpectedly, um, and we persevered. I can't thank my staff enough. I can't thank the City Manager's Office enough. Tanya and Randy especially were extremely helpful, um, during the year. We also had made a decision prior to the loss to make a change in our budget document. We had a ClearGov software that we used, and we decided to go a different route and create a document in-house, and I'm really proud of it. Um, I thought we did, um, a great job with a new document, creating it, and I hope it's very readable for the community and everyone who uses it. So, um, this one is an extra special one, um, for this year. Continuing through the tradition that has been here, um, is amazing, but this one feels a little extra special because of what we had to go through. And I will also add that the budget document is not just the Finance Office, it's, it's the whole team of the city staff, the department have input on, on the whole process. City Council obviously reviews it, um, and finishes that process, so, but this one's just extra, extra special to us. So, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Tara. Move on to item E on our agenda, is the Audience for Visitor. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments related to the city. Sir, did you have some comments you wanted to share?
I'm speaking, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Not at this point, Tom. I'm not listening. I'm getting ready to talk to our listeners.
Okay, very good. Well, appreciate you being with us tonight. So, not seeing anybody here for public comment, we will close the floor, and we will move on to item F, Approval of the Minutes for the Work Session of September 22nd, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Christie?
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion, a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to item G, under New Business, we have two items. Uh, item number one is ordinance making an additional transfer fiscal year 2026 for the Capital Projects Fund for the phone system upgrade, and we have back with us our Finance Director, Ms. Tara Woodruff.
We received a request from the schools to transfer funds within the Capital Projects Fund. They asked to transfer $89,492 from the Pecosin High School Parking Lot Resurfacing Project to increase funds towards the phone system upgrade. And this project, the phone system upgrade project, will upgrade phones for this, both the schools and the city. On December 9th, 2024, the City Council approved the reappropriation request from the schools to appropriate $215,000 for the high school parking lot resurfacing project and $95,000 for the phone system. Funds have been spent in either of these projects, so both of these account balances remain available. The schools issued an RFP and awarded a contract to IPC Technologies for $184,491.95. Therefore, they are requesting the transfer of the additional $89,492 to fulfill this contract to add to their 95. Additionally, the schools indicated in the request letter that they would not proceed with the previously-approved parking lot surfacing project. Therefore, you have an ordinance making the transfer of the $89,492 in the Capital Projects Fund System Upgrade, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Josh Montalvo is also here from the schools, if you have any questions for him on the project as well.
I, I have a que, I, all right, sorry Keith, I jumped in front of you. I do have a question. So there was appropriated money for the paving project. Some of that has been requested to go to the phone upgrade, and what happens to the rest of the appropriated funds for the paving upgrade?
That would remain in that project account. And the schools indicated that they wouldn't proceed with the project when I followed up on the question. Um, they did say that they would, they would scale back that project with the remaining funds, um, so they would be available for that project.
Any other questions or comments for Tara? Tara, thank you very much, I do appreciate that. All right, with that, we need a motion and a second for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a, an ordinance making an additional transfer in fiscal year 2026 for the Capital Projects Fund for the phone system upgrade.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Josh, for being here with us just in case. Appreciate that. Uh, moving on to item two, under New Business, is a resolution ratifying a declaration issued by the City Manager declaring a state of emergency in the City of Pecosin on October 11th, 2025. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution ratifying a declaration issued by the City Manager declaring a state of emergency in the City of Pecosin on October 11th, 2025.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Christie. Uh, item H on our agenda is comments of the City Manager. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have three items this evening, two of which are contained in a bulleted form in the agenda, but, uh, I would start by thanking all of our employees that worked to get ready for the storm we just had, as well as worked through it and continue to work on its aftermath. Um, we had a large number of folks work throughout the weekend. Uh, additionally, I'll take a moment to thank the folks at Landway, who, um, during a time of declared emergency, allowed us to park, our citizens to park vehicles over there and, and us as well, if we, if we need that. We, uh, we appreciate that very much. Um, beyond that, I have two items, uh, that are contained here on, in bulleted form on the agenda. The first is an update on the sidewalk projects. Really, I'll do a, a brief one, just to remind the community that the elements, the sections of Little Florida that this council has previously identified to move forward with the initial engineering and design work, that is, that contract and that design is underway. Uh, that's not news to council, but just to, to keep the community informed. Um, also, relating to Pecosin Avenue sidewalk project, over the course of the last several weeks, the mayor and I have an opportunity to meet individually and informally with members of council to talk about the sidewalk, uh, project and the survey work presented by the city engineer, as well as some possible changes pertaining to the charter, pertaining to the school board. So, during the course of the discussion on the Pecosin Avenue sidewalk right-of-way, uh, there appeared to be a consensus, not necessarily a majority, but a consensus that felt that the next step, um, under the, are we ready to go? If so, which side and which segments? Answers to those questions, as I interpreted them, were yes, north side, picking up from where the sidewalk ends, um, by the garden atriums, and the first two segments, which would be the design and engineering work to take, extend the existing sidewalk to Woodland Road as an, at least an initial, um, project. So what I'm asking for tonight is guidance from council on whether or not, um, that continues to be the council's consensus, and if you'd like me to go ahead and translate that consensus into an actual work order to begin the design, engineering, and design for those two segments on the north side of Pecosin Avenue.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from council members on, on this? What we're looking for right now is a, Keith, did you have a question?
Oh, not a question. I was gonna say that during the last storm, I guess, weekend and a half, oh, I went out in the middle of the storm, probably not a wise thing to do necessarily, and I drove up and down Pecosin Ave, I'd walked up and down Pecosin Avenue from Cedar Road to Carrier, or to, uh, Wood Creek and then back, kind of plotting on my own what was where and where ditches were versus underground piping and things like that. Um, I then went out during that storm while it was raining and was able to see where the water was collecting, where it was and not flowing, or not flowing very well, and my initial feeling was that the north side of Pecosin Avenue made a lot more sense, especially in the area we're talking about now, uh, for sidewalk detailing than to go with the south side. So, I endorsed the, the idea like that, and I endorse it here tonight, uh, especially up to Woodland Road.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate and admire your due diligence.
Yeah, it was wet.
Uh, council members, what we're looking for is, is a consensus, uh, to provide direction to city staff, uh, in accordance with Randy's description. We don't need to take a, a roll call, we're just looking for, uh, for at least four head nods.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, we think we have a council consensus. All right, thank you very much. Anything else we can do to provide support, Randy?
Uh, on this project, uh, no, sir. That was the direction, uh, I was looking for. Make sure that I had, had read the collective conversation correctly and that we're ready to move forward. So we'll issue that, uh, directive to the city engineer tomorrow, and we'll begin working on the, the task order to get our consultant working on the engineering and design for those two, uh, first segments, uh, as quickly as we can get that done.
Thank you very much.
I do anticipate that the, um, the cost of that will be well within the original budget allocation, which, as you recall, was primarily and first for right-of-way survey and engineering and design. Uh, we're not asking you for an appropriation this evening. Once we bid the construction projects, we may well need some more money, um, but we have, feel we have sufficient money within the original allocation to proceed to, with both the Little Florida segments and the upper. So the second, uh, bulleted item, uh, discussion that has been going on for some time is to highlight potential changes to the city charter, and for those that aren't familiar with how charters work, um, local governments operate under a general set of rules set by the Commonwealth of Virginia, and then cities and a couple of counties actually have charters, which is a specialized set of rules, which sometimes clarifies or even adds to the general, uh, legal framework and powers that cities have or communities have. And in our case, we have a city charter, and if you care to read it in entirety, it is on our website under, uh, code of, of the city, and the citation of which, I believe, is, is there. But, anyway, the, uh, the items that have been discussed, uh, in no particular order, but we're laying them out this evening to, to, to receive any final direction we may get from council, are to an agenda item that we will put on your next agenda. Um, we ask, we, we need the state, the General Assembly- It is on our website under code of, of the city and the citation of which I believe is, is there. But anyway, the, the items that have been discussed in no particular order, but we're laying them out this evening to, to, to receive any final direction we may get from council or to an agenda item that we will put on your next agenda. We ask, we, we need the state, the General Assembly specifically, to approve charter changes because there is a set of special laws for our city as we did last year with the charter change. This would be another request to our General Assembly members. Reminder, the General Assembly goes into session in January. They often do work well in advance of that with the Division of Legislative Services bills to include charter changes. So there, this is, this is timely to be talking about it now. So the, for those at home that may not be able to read it, I'll briefly summarize it. I can't do that too much without reading it word for word, but I'll try not. One thing that the Councilman Fai pointed out a couple of years ago is while we talk about the school board and school board members, the charter itself refers to the mistrustees. This would change that to amend the language to conform to the, to the actual language we've been using as long as anyone can remember. There's a certain language in the charter pertaining to schools that really was only specific to how we turn from a town school board to a city school board. Since that's 50 years old, while it's not hurting anything, there's an opportunity to remove it if we're also going to ask for more substantive. Beyond that, the more substantive things that have been discussed. One is to change the term limits for school board to full terms. Right now, the charter says you can serve a term and you can succeed yourself up to two more times. So that is a three-term limit. This set a two-term limit if this language was adopted and a charter change. At the same time, currently, full terms on the, on the school board are three years. The proposal is to change each of those terms to four so that those terms would be similar to, exactly like city council terms. I'll do six and then come back to five, if that's okay. Would be to, currently, the way the charter lays out the school board members, there's two from each of the districts and one at-large seat for a total of seven. The proposal that we've been discussing is to move away from that to include one specific representative per precinct and four at-large seats. So the number doesn't change, but the composition can change. Mean less district-specific representatives and more at-large. Additionally, we added some clarification in what we've been talking about that would make it clear that if a person is appointed to serve an unexpired term of someone else, partial term, that that wouldn't count towards the four, the two full four-year terms. And then I sort of come back to five. The idea is that we have at times over the years in making appointments, council has chosen to move folks might be in a district spot to an at-large spot or an at-large spot to a district spot as council move forward to sort of constitute the best possible school board from the applicants that it had. This would make, if approved, would make it clear that once a person is appointed to one type of slot, it wouldn't move back and forth. So if they're a district representative, they would stay that. If they're a at-large representative, they would stay that. One of the reasons for that is every time we moved people, particularly in the absence of clarifying language on number six, you could, you never knew how to apply the three-term limit because each time they moved from one spot to another spot, you could argue that the, the term limit reset. Trying to, to clarify some of the things that you've been confronted with over the last several years. And then finally, you've had this as an informal practice, but again, kind of like number one and number two, if you're going to put forward a change, you probably wouldn't put it forward simply to do number seven, but as part of a larger package. It has been this council's practice, given the demands, both time and attention of a school board appointment, that it would clarify that while serving on the school board, an individual will not be able to serve at any other city board and committee or commission at the same time. Certainly, many of our school board members come from another board and sometimes they come here, sometimes they continue to serve in other capacities. But this really says, look, while you're on the school board, we have an expectation that you will focus, have an intention on that. And those are the seven things that we've been discussing. And I'd like to put this on for a formal action at your next meeting, which is two weeks from yesterday. But given the, the interest in this and given the fact that council has not had a chance to talk about it as a group, the mayor asked that we put it on tonight and lay this out both for the public and also for council members, like once again. So if there is any fine tuning or perhaps the council decides that it, it just doesn't want to consider this at this point, we would know that so that we could prepare the appropriate agenda item for that, which would be then considered and potentially acted on by council. So a decision today is not a final decision. It is simply guidance. Probably went on longer than I needed to, but I felt like I needed to be there.
Randy, thank you very much. That was very thorough, which is exactly what we needed. And just to share with the public, this council and staff is always on the lookout for opportunities for improvement. And we recognize this as, as one of those opportunities in an attempt to, to streamline process, establish some consistency throughout the boards and commissions as well as council. As Randy said, just trying to make the council terms and the school board member terms consistent. And thinking behind the four at-large, and I understand there, there are some, some differences of opinion just from conversations that, that council members have had individually. Thinking is that with four at-large positions, it would create more interest in serving on the school board because there is a greater possibility of being appointed. I can think of times over the years to where we had a, a really good person that we thought would be a really good fit, but it, they didn't live in the right precinct. So this would give us, if approved, would give us additional flexibility, while at the same time ensuring that at least one board member would represent each term. Some more information on that, as, as we know, we only have four schools and regardless of which precinct we reside, everybody goes to the same four schools. And I'm in my 14th year now and I recognize that Councilman Freeman and Councilman Southall has served longer than I have. But what I have seen during my time as a school board member and a council member, if a citizen has a question and wants to talk to a school board member or a council member, they generally call who they know regardless of which precinct they reside or which precinct council members represent. And up until the last election, even though council members only represent a specific precinct, they were all voted on at-large. So to a large extent, the, the council or precinct-specific designation is, is a formality. But this is something that, that has potential to make things easier, to understand, easier to work with and be more streamlined and consistent. So with that, just, I'm very interested in hearing what other council members think about this.
Of the seven, I'll agree with five, which is a pretty good average. Number five and number six, which you just discussed, number six is making four at-large. Right now, we're, we're balanced where we have two from each precinct. And I think that's a good thing. And that gives you pretty equal representation all over the city. And we have not had a problem getting very qualified school board members. Last time, I think it was eight and time before that, I believe it was eight. I don't remember the previous time. But there's plenty of people, good quality people applying for a school board. And I do agree that a time or two, we had rather have had or just as well have had someone from a different precinct, but there was not a slot available. And changing it to four at-large would probably eventually end up with the same thing. We've got somebody that we can't appoint or reappoint. So I think that what we got now is better. And I think that the fact that we can move between precinct and at-large gives us additional flexibility, just what we said during the four we do. We already have that, but we kind of shy away from doing it. So other than numbers five and six, I agree with the rest of them. But I don't see a need to divide up the representation in the precinct.
I have something I'd like to add. That's all right?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that resonated with me in, in a number of ways. Raising number three, maybe we could have clarification is that two full terms concurrent, you know, consecutive, could someone step out and do something else and then come back in later to serve another two terms?
A break in service?
So, yeah, a break in service. So, you know, have a, if you will.
Someone moves back to the city.
Someone wants to be on council for a while and then go back to the school board and, because they liked it better, I don't know. But maybe clarifying that language because I don't want to be too limiting if that wasn't the intention. However, if that language is not, if that language is adjusted, then that would impact number four. So it would just, you'd need to consider that in how you would.
If we put consecutive in there, would that clarify two consecutive terms?
Yeah. No, she can't serve three consecutive terms. But you could come back and do a third term after a full break in service. Because sometimes you need to, the best person to fill a spot in the event someone vacates and, you know, you need someone with experience or might be the right choice at that time. So someone come out of retirement or something. Anyway, just some points of clarification. How, how, what did you intend and address it?
So is, is your suggestion to have a, a maximum of?
My suggestion is to be clear what you want.
Okay.
I can see making any of them work. Consecutive, allowing flexibility to allow back later and serve again.
Okay, if that person were to come back?
They start over? It sounds like their clock, their consecutive clock starts again in that scenario. That would mean, unless you say to no more than three terms ever. Right? To a maximum of three terms or whatever you want that to be.
The way it stands right now with, with the three for a total of nine, the, the two full years is all, almost as, as much. And it makes it consistent with, with the council terms. Please do.
Certainly, however council wants to do it is, is, is fine and appropriate. The, the current language, three years, succeed yourself twice, doesn't provide any additional clarification on that issue either.
Right.
And so we found ourselves often trying to interpret codes that we didn't write that was not crystal clear. We've tried to clear it up. We can clear things up more. As I referenced, if you take somebody from a district slot, you move them to an at-large slot to create a vacancy for a district appointment, which we've done, we've done, then does that start over? You know, it's, it's each, because now you're no longer in that spot. Is it spot-specific or is it term-specific? So if you would give some thought to that as we approach the next item, the agenda on the, on the next meeting, we can clarify anything that you think needs to be clarified. Because it, it's not, you could, you could probably write a, a 10-pager on this to cover every scenario, but, but there are certainly gaps in the original charter, not all of which we've.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, and I, and you're right pointing out that when I said three would impact four, kind of meant it to impact a different one, number five. And as a result of that, I can see someone could hop, 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 hop. And we don't want to have that. You know, now I want to be over here, now I want to be over there. That, that, that doesn't serve the purpose that you're trying to.
Could we say that a maximum of, of two terms?
I think it's based on the individual and not the position because that would allow that person to serve as an at-large and a precinct person if that were the case, but two terms. That.
Okay, any?
Agree with that.
Any other thoughts on Jeanie's comments?
Three, not number four. I'm at the number of terms and if you are at large. Central and one is at large, that's still too.
But the chances of moving from central to at-large at the point that you are appointed is pretty slim.
Yeah, because.
Otherwise, it would take up.
Why would they, why would they move you?
Point I'll get to in a minute. That's what I'd say, having been on, and you too, on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board where there's nine members, three of which are at-large and six of which are precinct-specific. And there was a lot of chairs, so to speak, on that. It was very difficult to figure out who was what and how long they'd been on, how long they served. There were no limits on how to tip, so it really didn't make a difference. This case, it does make a difference. So I'm pretty much against, I am against. Once a person's appointed to the at-large, that's the position they're going to be in for the length of their stay, same if they're by precinct. Now, if I get to talk about item six, I'm just the opposite of what Councilman Freeman said. I, we have four schools in Pecoson. If you have a six-year-old child, that child is going to go to the Pecoson Primary School if you choose to put them in public schools. If they're 16-years-old, they're going to go to Pecoson High School, assuming you want to have them go to public schools in Pecoson. I'm watching what's going on in Norfolk where they're trying to close 10 schools to save money. And because they have seven precincts over there and they have 10 schools they're trying to close, everybody's, four are closing the schools, but nobody wants to have it done in their precinct. We don't have that worry because we only have one of each. And because we have one of each, I don't see a real need to have people divided up by precinct because they're all going to be considering all the schools anyway because there's only one of each.
I, I concur with, with Keith. All precincts have vested interests in all the schools. So I, I agree with that, I do. And also I would like to mention that we also have, maybe it's a more informal companion document, I think, to this, which is the standard operating procedure that council and the mayor penned about a year, maybe it's been a year ago. And that was the standard operating procedure for the interview and appointment process for school board members to ensure that all the applicants are able to be interviewed by the entire council. Without that, you know. Without that, you know, maybe number six would dilute the opportunity for precinct representatives to maybe make nominations or recommendations. But I think with this new standard operating procedure, where applicants do go in front of the entire council, I think that that just helps pull everything together. And I think that number six, I think that that is a good change, just because we do all have vested interests in all the schools.
Thank you, Angie. Debbie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do agree with number six. And I also, I can think of a lot of people who have served on the school board years ago, and, you know, we didn't have an applicant, and you're talking to people in the community, there have been probably two instances I can think of that I talked to someone who probably served 20 years ago. They still live in the community, and, you know, would still maybe want to do that. So I think we do need to clarify that we can, that, you know, their term that they served 20 years ago is not, would not forbid them from serving again.
After sitting out for a while, you mean?
After sitting out for a while. And it's always, I mean, council's always going to interview, you're going to have, interview these members, whether they served, you know, a year ago or 20 years ago, instead and they're applying again. Choose them again, to appoint them again.
Our governor has to sit out for four years if he or she wants to run again.
Should there be a time limit on how long?
I think, because council, I mean, there's seven members of council. I would hope that that judgment, you know, a consensus to appoint, instead of having to say, you have to sit out for four years.
Question then for item three, would you speak?
Well, that's something we need to think about. Or, you know, I don't think we'd want to wait four years, you know, before someone's able to serve again.
Basically, we're talking that three would be appointed at one point, and then like two years later.
This, if approved, this would take effect when new terms are appointed?
As they are coming up.
We're going from three years to four years, so it's going to be a little.
If this goes into effect, then starting July 1st of 2026, those two terms, or those two positions would become at-large, and then July 1st of 2027 would have two more that would become at-large, and the rest would remain precinct-specific.
But their term length would change?
Uh, yes.
From three to four when they, when the next round comes?
That is correct. Are any other comments from council members right now?
The question, Randy, will this be a public hearing item?
Ma'am, the item before you would traditionally be an authorization to me or to the mayor to execute a letter of request to our delegate senator to initiate a charter change, just as we did this time last year, more or less. Citizens can certainly speak to it at audience for visitors. One of the reasons that the mayor asked that we go ahead this evening and put it up on the board and have this discussion, and so that the public was aware of the item in advance of council's actual consideration of it. So that doesn't necessarily take place of a public hearing, but is intended to give the community adequate notice of the kinds of things council is thinking of in advance, rather than finding out it was on an agenda the same night that council would take action. Given the many pieces and the several questions I've posed, other people have thoughts on it as well. And there's no one perfect answer to any of these things, obviously, but trying to identify the kinds of things that the council had as an informal practice, or has over the years talked about maybe wanting to change, refine, and, well, just whatever council thinks, will convey it to our delegate and senator and support them in their act. Recognize that the bill itself, if you ask for it at all, will be fine-tuned by the Department of Legislative Services. So they've got a group of smart lawyers that will work on the actual language. You just need to signal important aspects of it that you want to be included. And certainly, we'll have a chance, ask for it, to look at it before it goes all the way through the legislative process. If there's a refinement in your thinking, or some unintended lack of clarity, there are opportunities through that process to fine-tune it before it gets formally considered by the House and the Senate.
When does this need to go to Richmond?
Best-case scenario is November, because there are typically restrictions on the number of bills that senators and delegates can file during a session, but there is either a much greater flexibility or complete flexibility of things that are prefiled. So we want to be able to, if you're going to ask for a charter change, ask in November, give our delegate and senator enough time to get it in the hopper before January, so as to not go against their limited number of in-session bills, and also to afford opportunities for us to see it back and forth and to work in any final language requirements before it gets formally considered by either house.
Thank you, Randy. Just want to check one more time, any further comments, questions, input from council members? Okay, I know Randy and I have been taking notes, and I think we have enough information that Randy and I can get this draft dialed in. That'll give me an opportunity to speak with council on an individual basis and incorporate the comments that we've heard tonight, and bring a draft back, have it on the agenda for the next meeting. And of course, it'll be included in the meeting packet, and it'll be posted online for the public to see. Randy, did you have any other comments?
No, sir, thank you. I appreciate the input and the direction.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to item I, council directives. Freeman?
I don't have anything additional. I will miss the next meeting, so I want to vote against this.
Well, your input is certainly valued, and notes have been taken accordingly. Everybody respects and appreciates your perspective. Those for all council members. Angie?
To echo a bit what Randy was saying, thank you to everyone on the city staff that helped through the nor'easter and the flooding. Thank you to the city manager's office for staffing and the logistics and coordination, the police officers who manned the checkpoints to prohibit the sightseers. Jessica, the PI, Public Information Officer, kept the public updated. There were always posts. Public Works Utilities, I'm sure I missed a lot of people, but it was really well-done getting us through that title event. So thank you for that. And then the other thing is, I just finished up a Parks and Recreation class for pickleball, adult pickleball. George and Karen were fantastic instructors. There were 12 of us in the class. And if there's any interest in learning the mechanics of the game, so you can take advantage of the city's pickleball courts, I highly recommend it. I'm sure they'll have it again soon. That's all.
Thank you, Angie. Keith?
Yes, wanted to thank the Women's Club. They provided the volunteers last Thursday at our monthly mobile food pantry and did a great job. They brought more than just the women. They've also brought a couple spouses to go along with that, and did a great job, because we had exceptional amount of food that had to be sorted and gone through, and they were able to take it on really well. Also, just found out about noon today that Emes Baptist Church has been approved by the Food Bank as a partner agency. We're going to be running in parallel between them as a partner agency and maintaining the mobile food pantry the way it is, and kind of run in parallel. Food that comes into the pantry and distributed on the second Thursday of the month will, if then there's any excess left over, and any more that they are able to collect, they will maintain it at Emes Baptist Church and give it out to people in need that may not be able to come on that particular Thursday morning. So kudos to Pat Harris and her team over there for getting that accomplished. They're still working out the little kinks now that we have that in the rules that we have to follow, but otherwise, it's a good thing for the city.
Thank you, Keith, and appreciate your leadership with Food Bank and Food Pantry. Jeanie?
Thank you. Number one was public safety and communications this weekend. You all took care of that. It was really great. I felt really informed with the updates we were getting, and that we were able to share them out, as well as seeing them already posted before we even got there, which is great. I think that it really did go a long way to help the community feel informed about all the efforts that go on. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, I really wanted to thank the city manager's office, Public Works, for the work you guys have been doing regarding the proactive approach you've done to securing those temporary solutions for the recycling, and your continued work toward a long-term vendor partnership relationship. Not easy, not easy, and it has not been fun. But thank you for, you know, being very proactive with that. The Pecosin Seafood Festival's coming up, it's right around the corner. And I want you guys to think in terms of it as not only, you know, it's more than great food and vendors and time for Christmas shopping, or birthday shopping, or whatever those wonderful things are that you're there for. It is a celebration of our community. Come out and show support for the young people who are performing as members of local organizations, engaging in their talents and their gifts back to the community. I do think that that is a gateway drug to becoming someone who's engaged in public service, because you see yourself as part of something larger than just you and your group of friends. So come out and embrace them. And then I have, Keith, you made me think again about, it's wonderful how this council, the council members have this incredible willingness to do primary research for the things that come across our table in these meetings. You went out there, put your hip waders on and checked it out. Some people went and bought sound meters, because they're like, I want to know. And to go find out about sound ordinances and things like that, you guys are really engaging. And this is not, this is not just a yay or nay group, it's a thoughtful group, as you can see the conversations we've had, that now our city manager's going to back and try to figure out how to make things more explicit, not explicit, but, you know, clear and all the things. And it's a good group of folks. Love primary research, thank you. That makes me happy.
Thank you, Jeanie. Appreciate you underscoring the collaborative approach that we take, working together, working with staff, agreeing to disagree, and respecting each other's perspectives. So thank you for highlighting that.
And also to add to that, you know, while we're working together and just the school, changing the city charger, city charter for the school board, just bringing it to the public, you know, before it's on the agenda for, you know, that's a great thing. So our citizens can be aware, and they can let us know their input. Time to speak for the audience of visitors, it's very important to keep the community involved, and we love to hear their input, because the decisions that we make are impacting them, and that's what we're here for. And it's, I love it when citizens come out and speak and give their opinion, it just helps us, you know, clarify what the citizens want, and gives us something else to think about that we may not have thought about, and how it impacts others, that it might not directly impact us. So that's all very good information. And echo what councilwoman, but everyone has said, not just the councilwomen, but everyone that has said anything, you know, the food pantry, these are all good things, you know, thankful that we had someone here tonight from Yonit Way. That is a tremendous resource, you know, for our city, our citizens. And for those that are, you know, in fear of losing their homes, have children in school, just the thoughtfulness of that there's someone out there providing services to help them is tremendous. And thanks to having George Hammond here tonight, representing, you know, Claydah Rollins and that business, having someone in that time that you know, that's a community member, you know, when you have a death, you know, those folks, and they're very compassionate. I know both when I lost my mom and my dad, you know, those folks, Claydah Rollins, were there. I knew those folks, and that just made a very difficult time, you know, a lot easier in preparing for that. Even though my mom and dad had prepared, they had all things taken care of, there's still things that need to be done, and decisions that need to be made, and having that feel of hometown, family, people you know, really made a difference to me, and I'm sure it makes a difference to a lot of others as well. And Seafood Festival, yes, y'all, everyone come out and enjoy, it's a great time. I think the weather is better, yeah, yeah, so that's a good thing. So anyone, everyone come out and enjoy. And thanks to all of you that are here tonight for, you know, whatever reason you're here. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I'd like to recognize and congratulate our library director, Ms. Jessica Hartley, on her recent graduation from the Leadership Institute. That's a great accomplishment, and it just underscores how dedicated our employees are to personal as well as professional growth and development. So congratulations to Jessica. I'd also like to recognize the fact that our new emergency operations center over in our new public safety building was actually put to use for the first time. And want to thank our city employees for manning that EOC during our time of need over the weekend. So thank you for that. And also, as always, I want to thank our IT support, Ms. Jen Cunella and Ms. Allison Kroll, for their efforts tonight. So thank you, ladies. And if there's nothing else, we'll ask for a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman? Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman, aye?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by six to zero.
Thank you. We adjourned.